So hi, everyone. Welcome to the Joint Evanston Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. This is a meeting to train the members of the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals that are transitioning to the newly established Land Use Commission to prepare both of them for the new duties and responsibilities that they maybe were not familiar with when they were on their respective recommending bodies. The Land Use Commission will be holding its first meeting on January 12, 2022 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. And tonight, we're just going to review the different types of zoning relief applications that the Land Use Commission will be considering, the membership transition from the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals, and then any other powers and responsibilities that the Land Use Commission has. So I'll go ahead and pull up my PowerPoint. And then also introduce my colleagues. Zoning Administrator Melissa Quatz is here, as well as Megan Jones, Neighborhood and Land Use Planner. Melissa was the former Zoning Board of Appeals Liaison prior to passing a baton to me early last, earlier this year. And Megan has been the Plan Commission Staff Liaison. So moving forward in 2022, Megan and I will be rotating that on a quarterly basis with Melissa, of course, assisting as needed. So with that, um, this is kind of our meeting agenda and what we'll try to refer back to. I would prefer to not have the slides up the entire time, but it will be a nice way to keep track of what we're discussing. Melissa will be reviewing generally the operations of the Land Use Commission. Megan will be reviewing the application types that the Plan Commission would be, was previously reviewing. I'll review what the Zoning Board of Appeals reviewed, and then the other functions. I think Megan and Melissa will kind of tag team that at the end, and of course, we'll answer any questions. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and pull up the packet. And we can just kind of use the training manual that Melissa put together. And I don't know if Melissa, do, when I pull this up, do you want to dive in? Or do we want to introduce everybody first?
Yeah, let's, let's introduce everyone. I think that's a good idea. We all need to get to know each other pretty well. If chairs of both groups want to start out, maybe?
Former chairs.
Former chairs.
Since Violetta is, or she is on, sorry. She threw me for a loop at the end of the Zoning Board
Okay, well, I'll go first. I'm Jean Lindwall. I've lived in Evanston since 1974, so I've been around for a long time. I'm a city planner by training and actually started my career with the city of Evanston and served as Preservation Commission staff person. And also, I had Megan's job for a while. And I've worked as a planning consultant for a long time. I'm hopefully going to be retired in the next two months from that. And I do a lot of economic development and a lot of neighborhood planning and actually have done a few comprehensive plans in my day. So that's kind of who I am. So that's me. So who wants to go next?
All right, how about when you're, yeah, how about when you're done, you pick the next person?
Sounds like a plan. Jill, you're, you're next to me, so you can go next.
Great. Hi, I'm Jill Zorden. I am a Federation of N. So I was raised primarily in southeast Evanston. I left trick college and then time and paths took me all around Europe. I spent 18 years living in Europe. About three and a half years ago, I moved back to Evanston with my Irish husband and our two Swedish children. And now we are raising our family in Evanston. My master's degree is in urban planning. I have a bachelor's in economics, professional experience, and a little bit in planning consultancy, but then primarily in economic development and working for private developers on facilitating real estate development projects. So I have been on the Zoning Board of Appeals since spring 2019, I think. And I am excited for this next chapter. And now I will pick Christine.
So I'm Chris Westerberg, and I actually grew up in Evanston, but then moved away and came back in the late 80s, early 90s. I am retired now, but for the past 20 years, I had been vice president with a real estate developer and investor in Chicago, working primarily with commercial retail and residential properties, where I oversaw renovation and new construction. So it's, it's a pleasure, although often a challenge, to be on the Plan Commission, but I look forward to this new iteration to come. I guess I, I guess I get to choose someone. So Matt Rogers, I'm going to throw it your way.
All right. I'm Matt Rogers. I think I'm the only one who has the distinction of having served on both of these boards at one time or another. I was named to ZBA in 2006, and spent the last three years that I was on the board as the chair of that committee. And then also served on the Economic Development Committee, because I was liaison there as well. I was appointed earlier this year to Plan Commission. And in the time in between, I think I appeared before both boards representing clients, or talking about various things the city was proposing, and how I thought they would either help hurt or do nothing. And lived in Evanston, live in the 8th Ward, been down here since 2004. And very excited to sort of see the combination of these two. I fought the, the merger of these two boards for many years. But I'm, I think that we can make it work with the two boards coming together. So very excited for that. And because I believe Carol was who replaced me on ZBA, I will choose Carol to replace me on introductions.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. I'm Carol Marinchev. I came to Evanston 1999 from Bulgaria. I'm an architect, 41 years in the profession. Really nice to meet every one of you and to work together. Thank you. So it is Alec that I will transfer my speech to.
Hello, everyone. I am glad that I didn't miss too much of this meeting. I, and I am running low on batteries. I need to plug in. But anyway, I, let's see, I've lived in Evanston since the early 90s. Before that, 10 years in, in Womat. I live in northeast Evanston. I'm an architect, recently retired. Done that all my life. I, I, prior to the Plan Commission, actually several years prior, I was on the Historic Preservation Commission for a few years. And then wanted to be on another commission. I got appointed a Plan Commission. I've been on this, in this group for three years, I think, a little over three years. And what else can I say? Be interesting to see how this, these two groups work together. Brian, next.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Brian Johnson, and I've been on the Plan Commission for about two years. And prior to being on Evanston's Plan Commission, I was on a Plan Commission in Birmingham, Alabama. That's where I moved from to come to Evanston. And I'm a geography professor, although I've moved into administration fully now, so I unfortunately no longer teach. But I used to do research in geography and urban planning and demography. So I'm looking forward to working with everybody here.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Okay, so my name is Gina Bishop. Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm a longtime Evanston resident, like Janine Lenoir. And my experience with the city of Evanston was on the Evanston Human Relations Commission a number of years ago. My corporate experience includes being on the Diversity and Inclusion Business Councils, which is, you know, like minorities and veterans and things like that for Fortune 500 Corporation. I've also done things locally at Oakden School, and Timber Ridge School, and Skokie. And also by profession, my area of expertise is project management, contracts acquisition, global procurement. And then more recently, I've studied intellectual property. And I consider myself an advisor and strategist. And I've been dialing in on and off on these planning commission calls, you know, since the COVID, but I've actually been present at the city council meetings and things like that prior to COVID. So I'm always interested to know what's going on and getting input and feedback.
Okay, I think it's back to staff. I think.
All right, I will jump back in then. And I guess a bit of my stats, most of you have seen me jumping in and out of public hearings now for a little over 10 years with the city. And I also live in Evanston. So moving forward, the purpose of the Land Use Commission is basically to combine the zoning board and the Plan Commission and all of their duties. Generally speaking, there are not any additional duties put in there, or any duties that we secretly pulled out. There was a little bit of code cleanup, so some wording did change a little bit. But typically speaking, everything that was previously done by the two groups is now just going to be done by one group. That is all listed out in ordinance 92021 that was adopted by city council a few months back. And like I said, it's, it's pretty much the same wording of what was previously already in the city code. And we'll detail exactly what all of those things are in a little bit. But moving on to membership, the way membership is going to work, we are merging the Plan Commission, who all previously had three-year terms, plus zoning board members that had five-year terms. So we are changing everyone to meet at four years. So that means Plan Commissioners, you have had a year added on to your current term for when it will expire. Once everyone's term expires, then you get, if you have not completed two terms, then based on your last board or committee, then you can be re-upped for another term here, so that in the end, when you have two full terms, then you would be done with the Land Use Commission. We, we believe we are starting out with 11 members. We're still finalizing that, but it looks like that's what the transitional membership will be. Our intent was to not kick anyone off of the board. We appreciate everything that everyone does, all of the volunteer time, and we don't want to make anyone feel like they need to go. So everyone who wanted to transition over is able to. And then, once some of those terms start to expire, we will end with nine members and then stay, try to stick to that nine membership moving forward. We will meet on the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month. We are trying to make the first monthly agenda be the more full and loaded agenda. And then continuances can go to that second monthly meeting. That might not work out until we're a few months in, because we are a little bit backlog right now. We have a few ZBA cases that we couldn't take to the zoning board when the zoning board was about to be dissolved. We didn't want continuances lingering, lingering out there. So we will have some full agendas at the beginning, but hopefully that'll lighten up a little bit. Our first meeting, we will not bombard you guys. We have one case scheduled. And besides that one case, you will need to pick your chair, vice chair, and then any liaisons to committees. So everybody, keep in mind, if you want to be a chair or a vice chair, or if you think that any one of you might be really good at it and want to recommend each other for it.
We do have two cases. I'm sorry, Melissa.
Oh, we do. I'm sorry, two cases. We tried to make it.
I just, I just did the notices today. Sorry.
But we will help everyone through it, and you'll be well-trained by the end of tonight. Subcommittees. The Land Use Commission will function similar to how the Plan Commission had subcommittees. So there will be the zoning committee, zoning subcommittee, which will be five commissioners, since we will have a total of nine on the Land Use Commission. So the zoning committee is intended for more like roundtable discussions, where basically, no one knows what a good starting point for some zoning issue or tax amendment is. So certain things will go to the zoning committee, but not always everything. If you have a good background in zoning, or knowing the problems that are in the zoning code, then I urge you to join the zoning committee. We'll also have the Comp Plan Committee, and I'm going to let Megan talk about that a little bit more.
You're muted, Megan.
Apologies. Okay, so Comp Plan Subcommittee, that will also have five members we're anticipating for that. It will get started, hopefully sometime early next year. There was funding approved by city council to get started on the comprehensive plan, as well as strategic plan. So we're working on the RFP currently, and we're anticipating that that gets sent out in January, as we kind of wrap some of that language up to be sent out. But it's intended that the Comp Plan Subcommittee does some of the initial review of pieces of the plan, and provide some additional information to the consultants, whomever they happen to be. And then they will provide a recommendation to the broader Land Use Commission, once we get to that. So I can go over a little bit more information, once we get to that particular aspect of things. Melissa, I don't know if you were done with the introduction and the overview or not?
Um, I'll just jump back to a tiny bit more. I'm, I'm basically running through the, the training manual on here at the same time. So if we jump back to that, the next thing listed is staff contacts. So both Megan and Katie are the staff liaisons to the Land Use Commission. So everyone will, will be in contact with, with Megan and Katie the most. I'll be jumping in and out, and can always be contacted as well, but they generally know more about the individual cases. And then Johanna Knighton, our Community Development Director, she's, of course, the subject matter expert on everything, and she will jump in and out of meetings as well.
Did you want to, we can touch, do we want to dive into the rules right now, or first go through the different types of applications? Up to you. If you want to take a break, we can pick up.
Let's, let's go to applications. I don't want us to get stuck on rules and, and end up spending the whole meeting on that. So if we go to the different types of cases, starting out, we've got plan developments. Megan, do you want to take that?
You're muted.
All right. So we're starting out with the item that will probably have some of the most moving parts, and potentially last over a couple of meetings. Generally speaking, the plan developments are items that are, are larger developments. They have particular thresholds that have met, including being typically over 30,000 square feet on a zoning lot. They are over 24 dwelling units, which exclude bonus units, which I can touch on briefly shortly. And they can also be 20,000 square feet of non-residential construction. So these particular types of projects have a significant amount of public benefit, excuse me, not public benefit, public comment, and typically require two public hearings. So we often end up continuing those to a second meeting. And as some of you are probably aware, most of you, a lot of these cases end up in the news. Some can be quite contentious. These types of projects also end up including other items such as zoning of property. I mean, they also include site development allowances that are actually pretty similar to variations for zoning relief. And certain site development allowance actually have maximums. So you've got the base zoning, you can get the site development allowance. But if there's a particular development that goes above that, and they exceed that amount, then that would trigger super majority vote by city council unless, of course, they meet the IHR requirements, which I will get into right now. Some of these developments are, pretty much all of these developments at this point, are required to have at least 5% onsite affordable units. If they meet the requirements of the IHR and provide all of the onsite affordable units, then that triggers them getting those bonuses. And these can help with increased density, and also can lead to some bonuses, like I mentioned, with that super majority not being needed, if the development exceeds the site development allowance maximum. These also include a pretty lengthy list of conditions. Much of those are the public benefits. And these public benefits are not actually under the purview typically of the Land Use Commission. They haven't been of the Plan Commission. The code has some pretty general public benefits that are listed, that are generally things that come about because of the development. The public benefits that we do see are things that are more so like contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund, that's above what's required, or contribution for upgrading traffic signals or things like that. But again, those are not under the Land Use Commission's purview. Those are things that are decided by city council. These projects should also generally be viewed as a whole, and not through the lens of each particular site development allowance. Now, there are certain instances where there's some site development allowances that are looked at. Pretty much, that'll end up being parking. That is one thing that I'm sure most of you are aware is a pretty common thing, or common discussion, rather, for a lot of these developments, or some of the other projects that we see. So for example, if there's a project that's requesting a site development allowance for a reduced amount of parking, you may adjust that, approve that site development allowance with the condition that additional parking spaces are leased at a city parking lot, or something of that nature, or some kind of private agreement, if there's some kind of synergy with nearby developments within 1,000 feet. Additionally, there's some additional conditions or modified conditions that the Commission will be able to propose in order to mitigate impacts that they feel the development will have. And this usually ends up coming about, once you've looked at different standards, and those conditions can be proposed in order to help the development meet a standard. The votes for these developments can come as a whole, if in the rare case, there aren't pieces of the project that might need a little bit more work, or raise any kind of concern. But the votes for these projects can usually be done with, for example, if there's a map amendment that's included with it, you could vote on the map amendment first, since that's usually a condition of the rest of the development occurring, and then a separate motion for, say, development allowances and conditions, and then the overall project itself. One big thing about this particular type of project is people who own property within 1,000 feet of a proposed development site are able to request a continuance of the public hearing. And that is for the sole purpose of rebutting testimony that has been provided by the applicant. The Plan Commission made sure to make sure that was very clear in the rules, that's something that we want to continue. But that typically is why these developments end up being reviewed over a couple, a couple of public hearings. So moving along, I'll get into the map amendments that I mentioned. And actually, I'll go back and talk about the standards for approval. These types of projects have a pretty lengthy number of standards that have to be met. These plan developments are actually special uses. So Plan Commission actually has had a little bit of experience with looking at projects for special uses. And it has to meet those standards, as well as guidelines and standards that are specific to plan developments that are within the particular zoning district that that development is in. So this ends up being about 20 different standards that have to be met. Some of those are general guidelines and things that have to be met regardless, like pulling a building permit within 12 months, completing construction within 24 months, or providing a few market feasibility study, things that are either already a part of the application process that have to be submitted, or are just in general items that every development needs to meet regardless. So now I move on to map amendments. So these are proposals to rezone property within a particular zoning district. It could rezone something to a particular zoning district, or establish an overlay district to further regulate properties beyond their base zoning. So for example, the Dempster Main Overlay District is one that is in place. And generally, that comes about from a need to make sure there are particular items that are specific to that area that we want to preserve or encourage certain activity in those particular areas. For the map amendments, should a, I believe it's a three-fourth majority vote of city council is required for map amendments, if that particular project receives a certified petition against that zoning map amendment that is signed by 30% of the property owners whose lot lines are within 500 feet of that site. There are four standards that need to be met for this particular type of amendment, as there are for tax amendments, which I will now get into. Tax amendments actually modify the zoning ordinance itself. They change existing regulations, and can add new regulations or uses within a particular zoning district or things like that. Most tax amendments are city initiated, either through a referral from a city council member, or initiated by staff. There have been instances where we see there are things that need to be updated or outdated, and we kind of do a zoning code cleanup in that way, or make sure things are updated for what we actually see in the field. The tax amendments can, in some cases, be done in conjunction with map amendments, if there is a new overlay that's proposed. If there is a new uh overlay that's proposed, for example. So the text amendment would establish the regulations and the map amendment would determine where those regulations are actually put in place. Um, they can apply to the entire uh city uh depending on what the amendment is uh or to specific zoning districts. And not to typically not to one particular property, however, you do see instances where a text amendment is proposed by an applicant with the intention of putting a project in a particular space. And I started talking briefly about comprehensive general plans and neighborhood plans. Um, these don't have particular standards for approval. But as I uh started mentioning, the comprehensive plan, um we intend to get started on that. Um, the current plan is from two thousand, which is twenty-one years ago, and really doesn't take into account even us having meetings like this. So we are looking to, again, get that started and try to detail some more of the goals and objectives and update the land use um and redevelopment that we want, would like to see in the community. Um, and incorporate more things with the bar select sustainability and transportation and things like that. Um, for comprehensive plan, you began at the subcommittee that we will um put in place at the beginning of the year. And we also have a number of neighborhood plans that exist. Such as the West Evanston Plan, um Central Street Corridor Plan, Downtown Plan, I think are some of the plans that are most often referenced. Um, these plans, as the name states, are very localized. They tend to be um something that just generally speaking, the comprehensive plan may have stated as a need or something that staff needs to look at and make some changes to um. It can be something that staff sees that we need to have an overarching plan to encourage development in certain areas, if there may not have been development in a certain area. Or if you see a lot of development occurring and want to have some kind of uh control or guiding document to make sure that what is going in those areas is actually something that fits the goals and objectives of the city. So we've got things like corridor plans, like the uh Central Street Corridor Plan, uh the Chicago Avenue Corridor Plan. And again, the broader neighborhood plans like the Central Street, um sorry, the Downtown Plan. And we also have the T O D Parking Study Plan that was approved about four years ago, uh actually a little over four years ago. So this particular plan actually led to a text amendment that updated some of our parking requirements within our transit oriented development areas. So these plans are actually used to inform the decisions that are made and zoning changes that might be made. And again, since there aren't any stated standards within the zoning code, um, we generally go by the states um bestowing the um ability of municipalities to conduct these studies and have these plans in place. So that's generally what we go by. I think that is generally if for the plan commission.
I think so. Um, I think um, I'll go back to our little reference slide here. Um, so huh, um, now Megan just covered what the plan commission had jurisdiction over um and what they would make a recommendations on to the planning development committee of the city council and then to the city council. Um, the plan commission did not have a final decision-making authority on any of those items. Um, they were recommending body only. Um, the zoning board of appeals, however, did um does have decision-making authority on certain cases. So I'll go through a couple of those first and then also what you're recommend, making recommendations on. So if you were on for the last zoning board of appeals meeting, which adjourned immediately before this one, um, the zoning board of appeals considered a special use permit application. Um, special uses are uses that are allowed in the zoning district in which the property is located, but they just require additional scrutiny uh by the city so that the city can then um apply any conditions that they do feel is necessary for that use. And there are um standards that they do evaluate these uses with. Um, incidentally, um, one of them, the standards, one of the first standards they do consider is if it meets the general intent and purpose of the comprehensive plan. Um, so let me, I'm trying to have too many tabs open, trying to make sure I'm sharing screens that are helpful and informative, but also not completely flooding everybody. Um, so the standards for special uses, to again, the first one that is pretty typical for all of the types of zoning relief is just if the proposed use meets the general intent and purpose of the comprehensive plan. So is it promoting what the plan outlines and what the goals are for the city as a whole at that time? Uh, Megan mentioned ours is pretty outdated, so we are hopefully going to be updating that. And then we can make sure that these uses are in fact um meeting that, meeting the intent. Um, sorry, I'm having trouble pulling this up. I had the variation standards put up, but not the special uses. So um types of special uses typically are those that just require the additional scrutiny. So for example, the convenience store, that typically is reviewed um in particular because it does, they, of what they sell inside of them, even though it really is like a retail type of use. Um, and obviously, in this last case, retail is something that we do want in the downtown. We want, the city of Evanston doesn't allow smoke shops. So how can we allow retail use and make sure that they're able to continue to have a business there, but still monitor and put as a condition of approval what they um what they, to make sure that they're not turning into what the city would define as a smoke shop. So that's kind of the intent of the special use permit for convenience stores generally. Um, the other standards are related to making sure the use is not going to have a negative impact on traffic congestion. Um, that's not negatively harming the environment or any historic features. And um that in general, the use is not going to diminish the um any, have any negative effects to the neighborhood. So um, for example, if there's a use going in and there's some, there's a lot of lighting going there, they're going like a car wash, for example. You would request, we would, we as staff would request a traffic study and we'd want to know how many lanes they're having, how many, how quickly does the car wash get vehicles through the queue and make sure that the queue lane is long enough so that the cars don't back up into the street. That's something that might be something that's a special use, so we can really study that a little more clearly and then make sure that there's any sort of additional wayfinding, the city on site, the city might want to require that the um operator of that use. That's really the, the point of it. There are use that that's allowed, but the city just wants to be able to put any other conditions of approval that would be specific to that user and that site. Um, I don't know if, I think that generally covers it, um but there's special uses and um every zoning districts and um as I guess a precursor to what you'll be considering a January twelfth, twenty twenty-two, um, we are going to be reviewing a rooming house in the R four A district. So that is, does require a special use permit. So um it'll go through DAPR, of course, um the first week of January. Um, and they'll have any conditions they feel that that you should have, but then this body will be able to hold the public hearing. You know, are there, do you, you would be able to put any limits on like the number of rooms, for example, that he can have? That type of thing. So that's, again, there's something, there, there's not necessarily like a density or code requirement on rooming houses, so this is the city's way to evaluate that. For variations, um, there are two types of variations, minor and major. Um, a few years ago, I'm not quite sure on institutional knowledge on that, um but the city did pass some zoning code amendments to give the zoning administrator the authority to um make the final determination on certain types of minor variations. Um, specifically if um a setback or lot coverage um requirement, um if they want to encroach thirty-five percent into the required yard. Um, the zoning administrator, um being Melissa Klotz on this meeting, um, she can make the final determination on if those types of requests have uh meet the standards, because the city council gave that person in that position the authority to determine if there's a hardship or not. Um, then major variations are what the zoning board of appeals does actually um make the final determination on. And they do uh need to have, there does need to be at least four concurrent votes. So um and that's into the state statute. So let's say that you have only five people um present, so you still have a quorum of the land use commission and you're down to your nine members. You would still need four of you of the five to vote affirmatively to actually make the final decision on a major variation. Um, and DAPR does make a recommendation, the design and project review committee does make a recommendation to um for those types of cases. Um, there are a few major variations that the land use commission will be making a recommendation to the city council for. Um, those are related to um any height, um any requests that exceed the height. Um, anything related to parking and I think there's a couple others. I have, um, my institutional knowledge is not quite that wide yet, so I'll pull up a tab and recall that. Um, I don't know if Megan, do you recall what they are? We don't have them very often, uh, if it, and if it does occur, it's usually related to parking.
Yeah, that, that doesn't tend to occur very often from what I've seen since I've been in this position.
Okay. So they're few and far between, um which I guess is a good thing. We don't have people trying to completely blow the water out of the code um and having to go to council um and going beyond the land use commission. So um with the standards for variations, they need to, there, you're basically asking to, there's a requirement in the code and that person or owner is, they're not, they're asking for an exception essentially. And they don't want to meet the code. So now in some instances, maybe there is a legitimate reason for it, which is why they would go to the zoning board of appeals. And now they'll be going to the land use commission for that determination. So the standards with which you will be evaluating um variations are if there's really a hardship or unique circumstance that makes the proposed work not able to meet whatever the code actually requires. Um, so so there are some lots in the community that are maybe they're more triangular in shape, so the rear yard has like a slant to it and it ends up being more shallow in one area. Um, or the house already is very close to a lot line and they're just building the house straight back and maintaining that same distance that the existing house is. Um, but it would affect the floor plan in a certain way. Um, or they're want to build up and they just want to add a second story addition and the house is like um is two and a half feet from the lot line and it's supposed to be five feet. Those are some that are pretty unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, that's what we see pretty commonly. People are trying to make improvements to their homes, but their home's older and it just, that location is where it is. Um, and I, there was a case that we reviewed earlier this year with regard to kind of an existing coach house situation that had been there for some time. Um, and they were expanding it. Um, and the resident, the owners of the property lived in the commercial building in front. They were going to relocate to their coach house so they could rent the, the um so they could rent the front of their, the front tenant space. But they were expanding a legal non-conforming use, so they had to ask for a variation from the code for that. So um that's generally what variations are. Again, they're just, there has to be a certain reason someone doesn't want to meet the code. Um, and then finally, um, these are not seen. We almost heard one earlier this year, but it, they ended up withdrawing the appeal because they were able to work out something with the property owner. But um Melissa had made a final determination on a minor variation and a property owner within two hundred and fifty feet, um she was actually right next door to the property for which the relief was granted. Um, she did file an appeal to Melissa's decision. So um this body now, um, the land use commission will be reviewing any appeals to Melissa's determinations on um minor variations. So um we don't have them very often, so I'm not going to go into great of detail. Um, I think that was the first one. And how long you had said, Melissa? Had you seen one since you've been with the city?
Yeah, we, we typically get about one a year. Um, but generally speaking, if we have a lot of them, then it means staff isn't necessarily making the right decisions. So it's a, it's a good, it's a good check on staff to have. Um, and, and just to throw in that, that the land use commission is the final determining body for appeal cases. The only thing that can occur after that is a, a court case in civil court.
Right. So I think that pretty much covers what ca- types of cases the Z B A reviewed and um what their decision-making authority was with them, that the land use commission will now be doing. Uh, so I think with that, um, I don't know that there's anything, I'll pull up my slides one more time. But I think we've generally covered everything from a high level. So is there anything you want me to, would you like me to pull up the train manual, Megan or Melissa? Anything we want to skim through or see if, or just throw out, open it up for questions?
Um, I think just a couple of things to mention for the training manual. Uh, we also have in there meeting procedures where we run through basically every single step of what should happen in the meeting in order. Uh, so feel free to refer to that during the meetings that you know what comes next. Uh, we also have in there, uh, all of the information has many, many links to the zoning ordinance. All those blue, blue links there, so if you ever want to deep dive into the city code, feel free to check out all of those links. Um, and then we do list every single standard that, that each of these different case types have. And I want to drive home the point that for standards, for every case, we must go through every standard. And if you personally believe that any one standard is not met, then you cannot vote for that case. However, you can find that a standard is not met, but with an appropriate condition, then it is met. So if you stipulate that, then you could go ahead and vote for it. But you are never to say that this standard is not met and then go ahead and vote for the project. That's, that's a big problem in, in court. So just make sure you are very clear on, on noting why you think standards are met, or if they're not, make sure you really do vote against it. Um, other than that, we do have an updated chairs opening statement um, in the training manual. So keep that in mind if you decide to be chair or vice chair and need to jump in quickly, don't panic. We have all of the wording in there. Um, and then very lastly, there's just some good links to some things to check out, Open Meetings Act, uh, Roberts Rules of Order. Uh, and then a bunch of things that are on the city website. So with that, um, do you guys have questions?
I have a, I have a couple of questions. Um, one is on the committees. Um, how do we, um, how do we tell you the staff or whoever? How, uh, that we're interested in a committee and then also, um, if there are a lot of, a lot of people interested in one particular committee more than is allowed, the number is allowed. How do you determine who's on the committee? So.
Good question. Uh, generally speaking, um, with the, the subcommittees, we have a number of people who just volunteer to be on those committees. Um, they may have a particular desire to be on one committee or the other and just kind of self-select. Um, in some cases may elect to have some people put on those committees. Um, and I think if it's a case where we have everybody wanting to be on a particular subcommittee, then we would go into maybe voting on particular members in that case. Um, I've not actually seen that occur before, but I would think that we would probably want to have some kind of voting mechanism.
Yeah, in my experience, it's never been, it's never been a problem, but you know, who knows with a larger, uh, with a larger group. And who coordinates that? Is it you, Megan, or, or um, some Melissa?
Yeah, generally it'll, it'll be me. Um, typically at the end of the year. Um, and it, it really was a case and we had a number of different subcommittees. We kind of carved some things down a little bit. But uh, towards the end of the year, when we're doing the election of the chair and the vice chair, that would be when we determine who is going to be on the subcommittees. Um, if there are already people that are on there, they determine if they wanted to stay, or if we had new commissioners or if we had vacancies that occurred, uh, they could decide if they wanted to be a part of those or, or one of the subcommittees. Um, I don't think it'll be the case now, but we also at one point with the numerous boards and commissions that the city had, we had liaisons for different boards and commissions, but we've uh, kind of stepped away from that.
Okay. My second question is, uh, is a little dicey here. Um, you know, we've had on the plant commission, we've had situations where the meetings have gone into the early morning and no one, no one wants that. The applicant doesn't want it. We don't want it. And so we had talked about limiting, um, limiting the, um, the time that a meeting could take into the evening. And I honestly, I, I can't remember what we, what we decided as a policy. Um, and whatever that is, if someone could uh, articulate that, is that going to be the same policy for, for this group?
Yeah, I think it'll generally be the same as what we decided kids playing up that section now. It, it's a matter of determining. Uh, not starting new business. I think it might be in the rules.
It's, I think it is in the draft rules. Yeah.
Um, I've had that already.
If I recall, I think that it's that no new item shall be started um, after ten PM and that any business just, um, anything that's still being discussed at eleven PM be, I'm just, you'll continue it. Is that, does that sound right, Melissa?
Yes, that is correct. And I believe it's at the discretion of the chairs. You guys can change that if you want, but generally speaking, yeah, it's, you won't start any new cases after ten and you won't keep going past eleven. We don't want to be there.
That sounds familiar. I just wanted to know if that was going to continue in this group. So good.
Absolutely.
No, and now that we can, will likely be doing virtual meetings, we'll all be a little more likely to be a little comfy at home. Um, and I think with the subcommittees, uh, were you wanting Megan and Melissa, should they email us? Or Megan for the comp plan and me for the zoning committee if they were interested? And then we'll kind of, we could read a list at that first meeting of who's noted interest. Or were they kind of gonna do a raising hands on the Zoom on January 12 when they're present? Then what if not everybody is in attendance either? So.
Yeah, maybe for, for ease and considering we're, we're virtual. If, if anyone knows their interest already and wants that to be in a prepped staff memo so that everyone can see what people want to do, uh, we can have that laid out for you guys. But then you can always definitely jump in at the meeting and say, actually, I've thought about it and I do want to be on whatever. So feel free to email us.
I've got a couple of questions too. Uh, the first is just kind of, I'm curious in the purpose under B, there, they talk about um, uh, we're responsible for, uh, you know, recommendations on amended zoning and regulations. But it's got building construction in there. What's, what are we going to be doing with building construction regulations? If anything?
Hopefully not much. That, that was previously um, in the plan commission portion of the city code. And in, we, we did leave it in there because in theory it could be necessary. Um, for instance, say you review a plan development, but you determine that um, it's only appropriate and meets certain standards if a certain type of building construction is used. Um, say you feel that's, that um, it's a small enough project that by the building code, it could use stick construction. But you have concerns about fire safety, given the proximity of other structures, then that is a condition you could make. And technically that is building related. So in theory.
Okay, that, 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 that's helpful. And the other question I've got, I've uh, been the liaison to the economic development committee, which meets on the fourth Wednesday of the month. So what happens? Are, are we, are we, are we definitely s- uh, sat with the, the second and fourth Wednesday? Or, I mean, I know, you know, what, 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 what happens? You know, because it's, it's silly to be on a committee that you can never go to.
Agreed. And the bad news is the economic development committee is restructuring themselves. And we are just losing that liaison position.
Wow, okay.
So in the end, it does not matter.
Then it's not an issue.
Um, quickly, um, in regard to that also, we meet in city council chambers, as does economic development committee, which means every other meeting that we meet, we will not be able to meet in council chambers. We will have to meet in one of the conference rooms, which is not videotaped accessible and everything else. I don't know if anyone's thought of that. I happened to think of that today while I was sitting here thinking about things, because that's what I do.
We will have to figure it out. Thank you, Matt.
And actually, I think the economic development committee at their last meeting was talking about maybe meeting in preferring to meet in a regular meeting room. So I don't know.
I mean, it, it won't become an issue until we go back to in-person meetings potentially. But since the chair and staff have to be in a room, um, I don't think it'll be a problem Zoom wise, but when we go back to the full committee having to meet in person, that will present a conflict and, you know, we'll lose.
Well, I would hope we would not lose if we're also trying to get business for.
Yeah, yeah, the city council's not going to give up chambers to us. I, I, I guarantee you that.
Okay, that's very true.
We will work on that issue.
So any more question? Yeah, I was like, did we, did we really cover everything?
Now, we can go to the, the meeting calendar and briefly look at that, if there are any dates that raise any flags. I think we were pretty good at being able to avoid holidays.
Um, I understand we've, you know, is the, is the intent to meet really regularly every other, you know, every two, twice a month? Or will there be instances where, you know, I, I understand the beginning, you've got a lot of things to catch up on. But will meetings, you know, the second meeting be canceled if there's not business? Or are we going to be then doing like comprehensive plan stuff as a committee of the whole? What's your thought?
I, I think that will really depend on how quickly we get going. So typically, plant commission wasn't meeting twice a month, but with the load of cases that were coming in and then continuing cases that actually became a need. Um, so in some cases, we may have that second meeting and we may not actually have agenda items. So, so it is possible that, that second meeting will be canceled. But due to the combining of the duties, we wanted to have those two meetings on the calendar just to, to meet any potential uh, influx of applications that may or may not occur.
The zoning board of appeals was only meeting once a month and they actually did end up. There were a couple of meetings over the summer that were actually canceled. So um, the caseload that this commission will be absorbing from the zoning board of appeals uh, shouldn't be too high, um, especially considering that some cases that were also being, they were regular things that were being approved by the city council with some standard conditions. They've been converted to administrative review uses. So um, Melissa's been taking those through to uh, design and project review committee for final determination and they're not coming. So hopefully that will kind of also continue to funnel the caseload down. But um, I, I would concur with what Megan said. Um, for those of you that were on the ZBA, you may be meeting a little more frequently, but for those of you that were on the plan commission, it may kind of continue to have that uh, twice a month cadence, cadence, depending on um, how the, just applications that come in.
So to add to that, um, the, the draft twenty twenty-two schedule, we do have two meetings a month scheduled just because it's much easier to cancel a meeting than it is to add a meeting. But we do not intend that we will be meeting twice a month, every single month. We, we fully hope to be able to cancel some meetings.
It is an open meetings act requirement that as a public body, you adopt a schedule at the beginning of the year. So having them on the calendar to start is always uh, to Melissa's point better.
And we are mindful of other holidays, which is why November and December is just the one meeting. Because that, that second meeting would typically fall right before the holiday, where people were probably already out of town or um, unable to be fully present. So.
Especially, especially because by next Christmas, we will all be traveling.
This is actually the regularly scheduled ZBA night, being the third Tuesday. So we, although it's a little bit odd, it is technically the regularly scheduled meeting, um, evening.
Uh, the other thing that is in the packet for tonight are the, the draft rules. So if everyone can take at least a glance at those, uh, they are basically a combination of the plan commission rules and the zoning board rules uh, minus the repetitive stuff that the law department does not want in there. So, um, please take a look, make sure that you don't see any, um, any mistakes or anything like that. And if you have any comments or questions or suggestions, email them to me specifically because I am compiling all comments together, um, to then see what we need to incorporate, uh, that the law department is okay with. I've already gotten comments from past uh, chairs and vice chairs, but to everyone else who's now seeing the rules, please do take a look at them. Don't take my word for it. Uh, let me know if anything needs to be changed.
Well, I'd like to say nice job, ladies. Nicely done.
Thank you. It has not necessarily been the smoothest because we're, we're still running the current committees while also trying to get this one up and running. So we, we all do apologize if, if things are a little bit janky.
Yeah, and also the, the land use commission page on the website is active. You should be able to search for it. I did some tweaking of that today. Um, so feel free to take a look at that. If there is anything that is incorrect, I think I've got everything right. Just let me know.
Cool.
Any other questions or concerns? Last call?
Oh, I think you guys covered a lot. Great job.
Okay, do we need an official adjournment?
I don't know that we have a official chair, so that's why I was like, I don't know who to start the meeting.
I don't think we really have an official chair or, and I don't think we were discuss, you know, nothing was for discussion. So maybe we should all just say, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great holiday.
Thanks, everyone.
You too.